So the grass was...
So the grass was... Yeah, it keeps it...
It's fine.
30 minutes, I'll be in order.
Now it is.
Well, you didn't want us over here?
It's a bad boy slide.
My pleasure to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
You got to take the keys.
No, it's the king.
I know, but I still, that was really cool today. Did you watch it?
Some of it this morning, we had to wait until we got our appointments, so I just as well.
Alright, we'll start with the roll call. Steve Herron, here. Carol Hunkell, here. Jay Jones, here. Lexi Murphy, here. Jeanne O'Roan, here.
Number four is to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Can I make a motion to approve it? We actually want to remove one item, is that correct, Scott?
Yes, yep.
Item five. Five? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with removal of the payment of claims.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been a motion by Carol, second by Jeanne, to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting with removal of item number five. Do we have any other further discussion or questions?
We just didn't have that, we just didn't have that ready here.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of said motion and second, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Okay, there are some reports. Anybody have anything exciting to share? If not, I'll... I think they're official whatever you're ready, one of them is yours. Scott, do you see?
Yep. Yeah, just, we had a couple of building permits that were approved this week, also as far as nuisances. Met with a couple residences there, called one of the property owners, and had a conversation with them. I know when we get to it, we did get the numbers back, kind of jumping here, from the airport, I don't know if you want that now, or wait for the... From Woodley Aerial, their check they said is going to be put in the mail tonight, they sprayed 2,406 acres at 35 cents per acre. Ag State spoke with them today, 71,967 acres were sprayed. And just, just some of the questioning there, they were saying it's 25 cents an acre, so I don't know if that's something that needs to be looked at next year, or if we were actually, it was supposed to be 35.
I thought we had changed it to 35.
I thought we had changed it.
You probably need to look at their contract.
I thought it was 35 cents.
I did too. I don't know when, if we did it after the sprayers last year, or we...
It was, yeah, it was, they...
We can go back and look though, in the minutes.
This year you approved this for this year, right?
Yes, that's what I thought.
It was... It was 25 last year, instead of what this year was.
Yeah, so then when, I think either last, last fall or last spring, we approved new contracts for 35 cents for the season of 2022.
Yeah, I think so too.
So...
You need to probably go find that contract.
I'll have to, somebody will have to find that contract, see what it was dated.
So he just says it was 25 though?
Or in the minutes.
It'll be in the minutes, it shouldn't be that.
Okay.
I don't know if we had contracts with all of them?
Cause he told me there was no contract. That's what, that was how I was told.
Sandy had signed contracts for them.
Yep.
Okay.
How many acres did you say Woodley Aerial had?
Woodley had 2,406.
Okay.
And then Ag State sprayed 71,967 acres.
Oh, they were busy.
It could have been, see that contract could have been in First Co-op's name.
Oh, Ag State.
Because they merged, just, they just merged.
Oh yeah, from last fall, yeah. But that all passed through.
So if you... So I don't, who was your, do you recall who the contact was at Ag State?
John, I think his first name was John, I've got it written down.
Okay, that's fine. I can, you can get with me later this week and we'll, we'll source that out. But there shouldn't be a contract somewhere that was signed by...
It was probably first with, one with our ag partners and one for First Co-op, and then they merged.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought the contracts were supposed to be signed in the springtime when they came back each time.
I don't remember when they were assigned.
Cause remember, they didn't sign in the springtime, cause we changed it last fall, but we get them signed, new ones signed from the springtime. I thought that's what happened, somebody went out to the airport, took...
That was for Woodley, Steve and I went up to Woodley and they signed that one.
And they signed it?
But Ag State, well, Ag Partners, First Co-op already had one signed probably, but they didn't merge until this year.
So they say they didn't have a contract, so they're not going to pay?
No.
Oh, I was gonna say.
If we can't, if we can't prove it, I guess we'll get 25 cents from them, but then we'd better make sure.
Next year.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm pretty positive, we had a contract.
Right.
And First Co-op signed it, so...
And that should move that to the business.
Yeah.
Should have.
So anyway, it's something to look into, get it done.
Oh, no, that's all I, for that, we can talk about the others most we get them to.
Had to make a new lift, or net for the lift station to clean that thing out, clean that out. Pushed up branch pile, flow tested a bunch of hydrants, got the sidewalk fixed on the entry here to the city hall. Got the guys signed up for water licenses, I think November 2nd possibly, I think they're taking, I think that's the day they're taking tests. Caden tested, got his first, what's my call, done for his apprenticeship, passed that. Test grease well pumps, fixed some streetlights, replaced a fuse cutout line shop, fixed Mary's water line, secured meter to a house, posted shut offs. Rich and Josh went to the fall conference for rural water, cleaned out well, floor building, took down flowers. And then, I didn't get them with anything but the streetlights and poles are something to be thinking about, we don't have anything to replace, and these metal ones I think have...
Not their waterloo?
They've got downtown ones.
Downtown ones. Keep that in mind, engineer for the switchgear called and wondering what we want to do. As far as he knew, there wasn't much for grants or anything out there, so I think we might be on our own. There's an infrastructure, but he said there's only so much money and everybody's already got their hands out for that, so the possibility of us... We did get our GIS mapping, we got trained on that, and got, so far all of that, that was Thursday I believe, we got trained on that, and we got part of north side of town hydrants and main valves done. And then we did, we got our hydrant buddy, and we have not used that yet, so...
Do we have any tentative dates for the power, does it shut the power off at night?
That's, that's not, if we're gonna replace the switchgear, I'm not even gonna spend the money to test.
Okay.
It's like, but that was not gonna happen, so...
Okay.
I mean, if we're gonna go ahead with getting new switchgear, new building, all that stuff, I'm not even gonna...
Okay.
Cause just the, you know, testing was, how much a hundred was it?
We got some of the testing done in there. The air brake switch is the only thing that didn't get tested, that would have, shut down the town, and that would be, if we get the new switchgear and whatnot, they won't even, they'll take that out, so... That's all I have.
Nathan or Trent?
For a couple of weeks, we've got a high school, a young lady, Ryan, with us as part of a study program.
What'd he say?
Said maybe.
Alright, we did a lot from Ryan before, so I hope anybody that knows he has anything newer ambulance, and you guys had another meeting in there?
Well, I told Laura Strew to tell the treasurer to what the amount of the check was, did they ever come in and pay for the ambulance for the lift pot?
No. Well, they did in the very beginning, they paid for it.
They what?
They paid for the lift pot, cut months ago, didn't they?
No.
Okay, then they have coming in.
Okay, cause I just pulled them back for our last meeting, that's what Johnson decided they should do. So, okay, and then Ryan, I think was just working on township dollars and all that for the fire, the fire cop.
Yeah.
But you kind of, and then there was a mess up with some bills. You and him worked on that?
Yeah, we worked on that, and it's good.
We had some concern about, I talked to Ryan this week, and some concern about the property purchase for the fire station.
Oh, I talked to, cause I asked that question last, our last meeting, so I talked to Tisha, like, to see like where we're at with that, and she said she didn't get any of the information from Scott or Brenda until September 2nd, and we had that meeting back in June.
Yeah, but you had given it to Thor, Thor was looking at it.
Yeah, Thor.
Thor was looking at it.
So we had two lawyers looking at it?
Well, I think she just brought it, cause he hadn't gotten back, yeah, just to keep her up to date.
And he hadn't gotten back to us, or what?
I talked to him one day, not very long ago, just because I had something else to visit with him about, and he said the Johnson property should be this month I believe yet, coming to the city, unless of course they pay everything up, which he didn't think probably would happen, he didn't know. But he's not completely, he was working with Brian on some other stuff out there, so...
And he also was addressing you.
Yeah, so he was working on some of that.
So, we haven't gotten anywhere when we...
Not at this point.
Because they want...
Nothing solid at this point.
No, no, no.
We talked.
It's not likely to...
We talked about... No, we talked about maybe getting a couple contractors in to see actually how much it costs to make the Johnson property workable.
Whether we use it for the...
Everybody says a hundred loads of dirt, but it's as high as you'd think, they don't have to have the station set in as high as the street, you know, to...
So don't we kind of want to go with...
I don't think Ryan cares as much anymore.
Oh, did I talk to him this...
We just talked to him.
Oh, this week?
Yep, well, last week and this, well, I did not this week, this week.
Oh, cause I just talked to him like on Saturday, and he was, didn't seem very interested in that property, so that's why.
He said he didn't know either, but he was willing to get somebody in to look at it. Willing to, you know, look and see what the Johnson property was gonna cost to... Sure, whether we use it for that, or use it for... Bring it to where we can use it. Housing, whatever we use it for.
So, I guess I'm confused, that, you know, we had that closed session on the purchase of some property, and that wasn't even the property in question.
No, it wasn't.
No.
So, we haven't moved forward on that, because we have some people that probably are gonna donate some of the property.
We do, the situation has changed. It has changed, yes. With that property a little bit. But Brian and Thor, it sounds like, that must be Brian's attorney, have been talking about different things, and he was helping him get, so he could get his buildings in and stuff. So at this point, I think it's going to have to be back in Brian's court again, instead of doing the exchange.
But he needs that done before winter.
No exchanges.
And there's no way we could have got that done, cause you know how that operates by and all that stuff. Why, is there another piece of property that we're, that we're looking at now, or?
It's just a two. Well, if I think we're gonna talk specific property, we better go into a closed session.
No.
No, I'm just saying, is it just a two?
No, situation has changed with the other property though.
Okay.
Whole new set of rules. I will talk with you about it.
Okay, cause I spoke with Ryan this week, so...
Right, so did we. So did we.
Okay.
And I also talked to Brian's attorney, so...
Okay, sounds like we have some data on that, when we get there. Do any of the committees here, he spoke about the airport updated numbers, that's what that was in regards to, does anyone have anything that they met recently to update the council on?
Yeah, concerning the bank property, I know we've had some interest, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, Iowa State Bank, and we just need to get something decided, you know, as far as, is it gonna be rented, leased, rent, leased to own, we just need to get a price for these items, and, you know, just go from there, so...
So, are you gonna say like what they want to do, like...
There has to be a plan of some sort.
Yeah, you gotta have a business plan.
Like, have they kind of said anything, like, we kind of, I would say we need to know that before we make a decision.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's been some, no, there's been interest, interest in it, and then they're just, they're just asking, you know, will it be leased, rent, or possibly leased to own, so...
Now, if we sold that property, do we have to take all the asbestos out before we sell it? I think so, but we got that money.
Yeah, and I think Sandy last spring, or was it last fall before Molly took it, there was somebody that went in and checked asbestos, but I don't remember what the cost was or anything.
I'm sure it's probably gone off.
Yeah, I don't know, I know it was, she did have somebody go in, though.
I know in the basement, I don't know, four times.
Probably.
Is that Finance and Economic Development, or Parks Fitness Trail in Lowrym?
Can we, can we back up on the committees? Unless you have something with the Employee Committee, I'm the chairman of the Employee Committee, I know we received a grievance from an employee, and I checked in the handbook about the grievance procedure, and it looks to me like we need to, or establish an executive session within 15 days after the grievance was filed.
No, because it was not a corrective action, you read the first paragraph, it says if it was a...
Kind of a disciplinary.
A disciplinary action, it was not a disciplinary action. Step two, read that Steve, second line.
In the event the decision does not satisfy the employee, and the grievance is, is an appeal from the disciplinary action, the employee may, within five day, five working days, present the grievance in writing to the city council. The city council shall review the dispute and warrant, and where warranted, meet an executive session within 15 working days with the parties. To the dispute and witness called by their party, a written reply to the employee shall be issued within 20 working days after the hearing. The decision of the city council shall be final and binding. So do you want to clarify that?
It's not a disciplinary action, it was a disciplinary action, and she got, and the person got their response on the first one, so, I don't know.
So the first, step one says, the employee shall within five day, five working days of the date of grievance, present the grievance in writing to the next higher supervisory level, who shall reply in writing within five days of the receipt of the grievance, informing the employee of his or her decision.
And he did.
And it was, it was in writing within that five days?
Yep.
Yes.
Printed it out.
Yep, it was printed out.
Okay.
So there's no grievance, because it was not a disciplinary action.
So step two says, in the event the decision does not satisfy the employee, and the grievance is an appeal for disciplinary action, the employee may, within five days...
It was a disciplinary action, what can you say? It says right there, Steve.
Okay. So we all got a, we all got the grievance letter now?
The second one.
The second one, I got the second, I didn't get the first one.
Nope, I never got the first one.
I never got the first one.
Okay.
I just found mine at the door, I didn't even know is, what it was.
Just wanted to clarify, are we working on that grievance, or working on that then, to solve the problem, or, or it's been solved, or what's happened?
I thought it was solved. I thought it was solved, he gave his, his findings, and that was step one, so that's, he went by the book, and step two tells you it was a disciplinary act, if it was a disciplinary act, then it wasn't, so it's over with.
Okay.
So did we all get, like, did we all have to see that like response, or no?
I'm not, I'm just talking for myself, I'm just talking what it says in that, on that face paper.
No, I'm saying like, could the higher up had it right or whatever, do we have to say, does it have to, I mean, I know, but do we have to look at that, or no? No, okay.
Probably just goes to the file.
Gotcha.
Okay. That's what I'd think.
Does anyone else have another committee report? Otherwise, we can move to item seven, which is that we, one of you are here for, one of the three, we have motion to approve street closures for Greenwood Chamber Commerce Ball Festival downtown, Saturday, October 29th.
Okay. I'll go first then. Alright.
So, our annual trunk or treat night, like you said, is gonna be on October 29th, and we're asking for a little bit different this year for street closures, we would like to run the trunks right here in the front, so from the corner in the middle there, all the way down to the, or right past here, for the city, the city hall here, to have that closed, we're gonna run the trunks along here this year, so that we can keep the businesses open down there, so we don't have to worry about people trying to get in, get their groceries and stuff like that, cause they always park in the back, which is a little bit of a nuisance for some of the older people, so this way it's open on the other side of Main Street, and then we will run still our vendors and games and all that along Broadway there, so we would stop right past, like we normally do right there on, whatever that is.
Are you free?
Yep.
So you want some from the end of City Hall, or to the...
Yeah, right, yeah, no.
By the church there?
Yeah, right here.
On the corner?
Yeah, we can just do it right here, that's fine, and then up will be, and then we'll go like an L shape, this year.
You just want kitty corner from, like, workmeisters over to the new bank, you want...
Yeah, so we would do, yeah, a little bit of a, little slam there, because we're hoping to have the carriages be able to just kind of squeak in there, and then we'll block it off, we'll have Whitrock's gonna bring their big combine and stuff, so we'll probably use that as a roadblock too, right there, so that we won't have to worry about someone trying to be crazy and running to, run into somebody, cause we know that can happen, and even 12 times. So we're gonna do that, and then we're gonna have the fire station along the other side there, so they can get without if they need to, and, and help with that road blocking.
What time?
So we are, wanting to start it a little bit different this year, a little bit earlier, because we hope to have a little bit more sunlight for the kids, and maybe a little bit warmer and stuff, so we're starting around 4 o'clock, and then, you know, we have the theater and stuff like that open at 7:30 and stuff, but we'll have, you know, everything shut down before that time, we always do, but yeah, around 4 o'clock is what we're hoping to be able to start it, and start the trunk or treats, but this year we're gonna have some, you know, some different food vendors and stuff like that too, and next year hopefully we'll have JW's, their new vendor too, because yeah, they didn't get theirs, you know, done, and we had, we had ours already reserved a long time ahead, cause you have to with those food vendors, so hopefully next year we'll have them as part of our event too, so that's kind of exciting. So yeah, last year we had, we had more than 350 kids show up for it, so we're pretty excited, hopefully, you know, we're gonna have another great year, and, and bring in more kids and more families, we had a lot of out-town families that came, and I know Laura even saw that too, at the, at the, at Prairie Market too, how it was really great to see the different families that came in there and bought and stuff, so it's just nice to bring in other families from around.
Make sure your food vendors get their permits in?
Yep, I think that's...
How many vendors you have, or do you know?
Yeah, so we have chicken and waffles, and burn unit barbecue, and then we'll have the popcorn, kettle popcorn again.
Sure, sounds good.
Yep.
I heard a lot of good response last year, from areas around, people around.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
The calm here, hopefully the weather's good.
Yeah.
I think there were people that ran out of candy last year, they were scrambling.
They did, they did, and I know Laura had, I think, almost ran out of candy there, even a store for a few.
We got extra time at night, good day, like saving time isn't until...
The 7.
November 6 or 7.
7, I think I heard, or 10, I don't know.
Make it, make it longer.
Yeah, yeah, so we're just, we're asking for those street closures.
And then you'll have everything picked up that same, besides like the corn, like...
Sure.
So it'd be Broadway from Main Street to Mickley?
Yep.
And then from Broadway to Groceback?
Yeah.
Both sides?
I'll make the motion to approve what the street's being closed.
I'll second that.
Second by Steve to approve the outlined streets for the event that day, Saturday the 29th of October. Do you have any other questions for Tammy, or any other discussion?
Do you want them to be a little closed before 4:00 p.m.?
Yeah, do you want to stay at the time?
Yeah, because they have to set up their, their trunks.
Do you want to do like, three?
What did, what did we, Kelly, what did we do in the past?
I think, I think in the past, we set them out on Friday, and you guys set them up, and took them down, set them up before, and took them down that day, we just set them up out, if you want something different, you'll have to let me know.
Okay, motion in the second round, for approving the street closures as stated, the date and the times.
The only thing is, maybe if we could ask maybe even the city to post on Facebook that we're gonna have those streets closed, just as a public announcement that they know.
We'll try to put it on the city website.
Do we have any other questions or discussion, otherwise we can call for a vote, if all in favor of that motion for number seven, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, no nays, motion carried, street closures approved, thank you, Tammy. And now we have number eight, motion to approve chamber completion of downtown Salinas aisle Boulevard and Highway 10, main using donated funds. Who's talking on that?
So, so we're just trying to make sure everybody's on the same page, so about four, four to five years ago roughly, when I came back, I worked for AgriVision, I got it on the chamber, and we've been talking about doing this for about that long, it was approved back then the way I understand it, we're just making sure everybody's on the same page. Barb Evil made a, a donation to, to do something with that sign up there, $1,550, so she's made that donation, and we're just to the point where it's like we, we made it our mission to get that done this year, it's been long enough, it's been hanging out there, and we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and so what you're looking at here is gonna be a sign that'll take up the same amount of space as what the sign does, it's already, that is there, or the frame of that's there, it's seven by eight roughly, eight foot by seven foot, the roof on that, the little, it's a little roof that just covers up the lamps and the electrical above it, is all rotten, so as part of that, we as chamber volunteers, we're just gonna pull that old stuff off, put some new plywood down and changle it. So as part of that, we as, uh, chamber volunteers, we're just gonna pull that old stuff off, put some new plywood down and changle it, just the way it is, just so it doesn't sit there and rot. And then, so this is, what you're looking at is, uh, basically old barn wood. We're, we're, right now we're visualizing, we're trying to get the barn wood down, but one by twelves, um, and that, they would run this way. And then this is a, a metal cutout frame, laser, laser, laser cutout frame that we would, it'd almost be kinda like a shadow box. I mean, it would sit just a little bit away from the, I think that's what we're envisioning away from the, uh, the boards. So as light, you know, you'll have shadow from the, from the light coming down on it. Um, and then we've got a little sign here in memory of, of, uh, Marlo. And I think you guys have, have that too, so. Um, we're ready to keep moving on it, just wanna make sure everybody's good and everything's good to go on it. Um, from there, if you have any questions, we'll decide, uh, like I say, we've got six of us that are volunteered to help do that from the chamber and more if we need it, but that's where we're at.
And the chamber's kinda covering all of this?
So what, the chamber's covering the labor and anything extra.
Okay.
On top of the fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Very nice.
So we're looking at probably a total of twenty-one hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars total out of pocket, is what we're thinking right now, uh, but that's, that's where we're at.
I would think if you were running short, people would gladly give.
Do you have enough money?
We do.
Okay. If you find something, you know, that you have to do extra, I'm sure people would donate to it, because it's a neat idea.
I, we think it's pretty cool. Like I say, I think we, we just like to, uh, we've been, we just haven't hit all the, our stuff together to get it done. And we're to that point now that we've got enough, uh, volunteers to help with it, that we can get it done and we just like to move forward if, if that works. And if it doesn't, then we'll probably just cease and desist and, and have, give it to Barb to give to somebody else, that would be more, you know. We're, we, we're just, our, it's taking this long to get it done, you know?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great idea. And she must have also.
Yeah, I think she did. Yeah, yeah, very much so.
Yeah.
Marlo sure did a lot.
Yes, he did.
Mm-hmm.
He's a good man.
I will make the motion to accept the sign.
I will second it.
My voice, Sienna.
I had to put my voice on too.
The sign, the chamber's completion of the downtown Selena sign. You have any other questions for Rich or?
We're gonna try and do it as soon as possible, as soon as we get volunteers that can be there is when we can get there and get the supplies, but we will, our plan is to have it done this fall.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, and all in favor of allowing that sign to be erected, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay.
So I'm talking myself, sorry.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Hey, thank you guys, appreciate it. I gotta keep moving, so.
Alright, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alba.
Thanks, Alba.
Well, thank you both. Okay, number nine, petition, motion for Eric, you wanna tell us what's.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for, thanks for your time, I, I do appreciate it. Um, basically, uh, for my new business out there for the seat dealership, um, I don't necessarily need garbage service. And so, uh, I, you don't know if you don't ask, I didn't know if I could potentially just, uh, decline garbage service out there. Uh, 'cause basically about eleven months out of the year, I'll have a few copies, a coffee cup, that type of thing, I mean, very minimal garbage. Uh, and then in the spring, when I've got paper bags that will split, all of a sudden I'll need like three rolls. So the garbage service isn't gonna keep up for me anyway. Um, you know, I'd have anywhere from a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred paper bags to get rid of, so, um. I would probably put those, I've got a silage box, just a dump box type thing, so I would put that behind the shed, carry them back there and take them to my burn pile at home. Um, it's typically what we've done with the paper bags to get rid of them, um, recycle them that way. And, uh, so I didn't know, I figured I'd bring it before the council and see what, um, comments, um, you guys could have.
Scott, did you find out anything when you called?
I called that number you gave me.
That was the landfill?
Yeah, yeah, and she told me they don't really have any say over anything.
Oh, okay.
It's more the cities that have the jurisdiction.
Okay, I didn't know either.
And, you know, I had asked Whitney about it originally, um, about if that was something that could be done or not. And you had said that typically they didn't, because, um, people don't like to, you know, go south in the winter, then they want it for six months and then they want it.
For the residential, yeah.
And I just wouldn't need it at all, so there would be no up and down as far as service, um, for me anyway.
Commercial charge even is, what is it?
It matters, it's a dumpster to get it.
Oh, I see, okay.
Mine now, I don't know if it's for a can, it's thirty dollars a month.
Okay.
So it's, it's not nothing, but it's not significant.
So then they just, do you have a dumpster out there now?
I've just got a couple fifty-five gallon drums inside the building.
But nothing from the landfill?
Nothing.
Or from Town and Country?
No, no.
What was our?
Well, I've never seen anything really in other places. There's like bunkers, I've one there, or just?
I have no clue.
Or do we have any of these?
I just know we have commercial pickup for all the businesses and that's what we're paying the landfill for, so.
Yeah, what does our?
Even though Town and Country does it.
What does the, what does our ordinance, what is our ordinance on that, have you checked?
I'm not sure what like the commercial is or any of that stuff, but I know, like, I know you were talking about like people, snowbirds and whatnot, well, well, if you have electric in the, and you have a house in the electric ton, then you have to have. But I don't, I have no, I can't tell you one way or another on commercial.
Cause.
Cause I don't think, Justin, he doesn't have cans, does he? I don't, I don't know.
Let's see if it's commercial, cause we pay.
You pay by, when they, when they pick up, when they dump, they go by, by, not what, by the yard, right? If they have a four yard dumpster half full, they'll charge it for two yards, I think. Cause we went through that whole thing with.
Yeah.
When, actually, they were paying at a cheaper rate than the residential was.
So how does, how does that work, like the, so like, does the city pay that? And then they charge the commercial businesses for the?
The.
I don't know.
Town and Country, I talked to her a week ago or so, um, not about anything in area, but just because we'd seen the two bills on our claims. And I wondered why we're getting charged two different places. And then the gal in Town and Country said that you get charged for residential and she said for the dumpsters, and it's a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month, and that's for the businesses. But she said the commercial charge is coming from the landfill.
Right.
And she said you guys in Sutherland are the only two that do it that way. Because some of them do it that the, whoever their garbage man is, takes care of everything. He pays the commercial and he, or you know, to the landfill and the dumping of the residential's also. But evidently, and I don't know why we're different.
So if somebody has a, a four yard dumpster and they fill full in the dumps, these guys don't get a, a quote on it? They, it goes directly to the, the business?
That's what I wondered, I didn't know what the business even paid.
Do you know? Does anybody know who, when they charge, send out their garbage? Do you ever get a res, uh, commercial?
We get a yardage sheet from the commercial. So the guys from Town and Country will actually give us a spreadsheet that says how many yards they picked up. And anything over six yards, we charge five dollars a yard. So if they use seven yards, then we charge them the thirty dollars plus the five dollars, so thirty-five dollars that month.
But they get a basic fee, it's like, like she said, a hundred and twenty something down about a month?
That's coming from Town and Country. That's we, that's the city pays that with the hundred and twenty-nine dollars a month plus whatever charges for residential.
Then it sounds like they don't have to have a can, it's just.
Yeah, I didn't know what rules would be there.
Yeah.
According to our ordinance.
They don't have to?
On one oh nine, it does talk residential is required and then it says for letter B, is every person owning, managing, operating, leasing or renting any commercial premise where excessive amounts of refuse accumulates and where the storage and portable containers as required above is impractical, shall maintain metal bulk storage containers approved by the city. So he's saying he does not have the accumulated, that can't, he can't handle himself and may I, we just can't allow burning in city limits and refuse, which, that you're not saying doing, so.
I kinda assumed that, I guess, I didn't ask, but I didn't assume.
Just clarifying.
Sure.
Yeah, so commercials, the way it sounds, commercial wouldn't be required to have any type of.
Doesn't sound like it. Unless it requires, you know, excessive amounts of refuse accumulates.
That's, I'm surprised.
Like you said, you said like paper, when your bags are.
Doesn't say they are required.
So you're gonna take them home or whatever.
Leave that, those conditions are met.
Taking back your place and burning there.
If they shall maintain metal bulk storage containers.
Just don't drop them in the back of the truck.
Then they have to get something.
In the old days.
It's kinda different.
If, if I, let's say I'm totally off base here and I do come back in a year or whatever and want the garbage service, can that be reinstated at any time, I'd imagine?
Oh, yeah, sure. You change your mind or whatever?
Yeah, then he would get a dumpster and then it's, then that dumpster gets built him through the city.
Right, sure.
Yeah, and he'll pay a hundred and twenty-nine and if he goes over that certain ton, he's about, yeah, then he gets charged, what, five dollars a ton?
Yeah, but for now I'd rather not have the, just an ugly dumpster sitting empty for eleven months out of the year.
Right, I can see that.
Not close to those qualifications.
Yeah, I guess if that's.
Keep it cleaned up is mainly.
Page ninety-one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Sounds good. So you should be good though?
Okay, do I need a motion on that or anything or any kind of official?
I'll make a motion that we let Eric not have to get a dumpster at this point.
I'll second that.
Changes his mind, you know where to come back?
Okay.
General motions and J A supported that Eric does not require her, the ordinance on page ninety-one stated for commercial container specification. Any other discussion or questions, Warren or us? Wes will call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried, thank you.
Uh, I've got a customer appreciation open house on Saturday night, if you guys wanna stop on in, see what, we're not completely done, uh, so, you know, if you stay too long, I might give you a hammer and a tape measure. Put to work, but, uh, we're, um, yeah, five o'clock and serving supper and all that, so stop in and, yeah, see the offices and stuff, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Your building looks great out there.
Yeah, it does.
Clean and every night, it looks good.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good one.
You bet.
Okay, that raises two. Number ten, open opportunity to address the council, five minutes per item. Rich, are you here to speak to me or are you still?
His eyes were closed.
I think he's dozing.
No, no, breathing.
Oh, okay.
Actually, there's one, you guys passed a motion to close streets, which is amending an ordinance. My understanding is that requires actually a resolution?
Really?
Yes.
For sure, for just that one night, huh?
Yeah, it does.
I didn't know that either.
Well, let's go, I can go on, resolution.
Yeah, you're right, that should've been a resolution.
But we can do it tonight since.
Can we do it or do we wanna, I mean, it's not like, it's another month. Can we do the resolution next meeting or does it make a difference?
It's unintended, so we can do it.
Can we know if it doesn't say resolution or no? I never know.
I'm gonna go for October the thirtieth.
Okay, sounds perfect. Thank you, Mary. Okay, we'll do a resolution at that time.
I didn't know that. Maybe we can include a fancy map or something for you.
We've done that.
Yeah, but I did think we did a resolution every time when the girls came in.
Yeah, we did.
I did not think so. I would've never known that.
Because I will leave the city's website where I learned that anytime you're going to make an exception to an existing ordinance, you had to do at least two resolutions.
Okay, okay, figured out that, maybe. Okay, council comments.
I do have a question. Okay, are we ordering these flowers for next year already or no? Do we always have to?
I don't know.
Tell me.
We have not, and, we took them down and.
Can I make a suggestion that we only do them on the four corners and not all the way down?
I don't know. I'm trying to think what it all looked like, it was pretty.
I mean, just in case, like, if we do get new lights, like, what happens if we don't, we don't have light poles, like the hook, you know what I mean, if we go to, you know what I mean? Get flags or if we're gonna take out all these trees that we, you know, of the concrete lifting up, if we have to take, why can't we just do it on the four corners and make it look nice?
And they do look nice, it costs us about twelve hundred dollars a year.
Right, so if we just do it on the four corners and make our four corners look nice and then, cause we're gonna have to redo all lights, some, I mean, that's.
So we do it on the center here and then what other four corners?
That's it.
Down here?
Just, uh, right up here on the main street, just that four corner, just that main four, four-way stop, whatever, four corner.
Seems better.
Because, Kelly, just, cause you said that, like, we have to think about lights.
Yes, are you gonna get that far though by actually, I don't know.
I don't, we don't, well, you know, you know what I mean, and then some of the trees, you know what I mean?
Are they starting to dig up again?
And they might, if we have to dig them, we're cutting down, then, you know, so why don't we just make the four, I don't know. And get like, why don't we get ba- banners, like, you know, the senior, you know, how we do the seniors, get nice, plenty of banners and put them up if we want to or something that way, or.
We don't have the water banners.
Right, I mean, it changes how, it changes us too.
I don't know.
That's a lot of money in watering flowers too.
Well, a lot of money and time.
I'm just throwing it out.
Over time, sometimes.
The four-way stop, why don't we just do the nice big plot plants right there?
And it does take, I don't know how, how long it takes them, but I don't guess it takes them.
I think between the hanging pots and the other pots, I think it's about two grand for the flowers and then it's an hour, about an hour a day watering.
So are we gonna do the cement pots then?
Well, we used to do that, like, I'm just talking.
Do the businesses, water those cement pots or not? No?
They, some of the businesses have their own flowers out, they water.
We have our own flowers, so we water our own flowers.
And I know some of mine here do too, like Nikki Fennell and some of those.
Right, but like the ones like, you know, by the post office or whatever, we all knows, the city, I guess, the city.
Oh, I thought the post office did their own too, I thought she put it out there this spring.
Right beside the door they do, that little one.
That one, yeah, yeah, oh, and right, that's what I love one is.
We have about eight or ten.
I was gonna say, we have eight.
Pots and then we have, I think, eight of the hanging pots, or, no, twelve of the hanging pots.
Yeah, yeah. So there's twelve, we get rid of eight of them then.
I mean, if we could save some money, that.
And those, I don't know, you guys can think about whatever you wanna do.
I thought you had to, we had to order them too, maybe that's why.
No, whenever we, whenever we take them down, we clean the pots out and then we bring them to Cherokee and then they just get grown on them early, I don't think they do it till.
They start putting the stuff and growing.
So we can just say we only want.
So we always get them from Cherokee?
Yeah, the blue.
Those, but the ones, other ones, she does some of them.
She does.
She does.
Oh, she does.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm just talking about the big.
Well, we can do it once and see what we think.
Yeah.
We get complaints or they think it, or we don't like it, we can change.
Yeah.
It's just an idea.
It's an idea, good idea. Yeah, we can see.
I was just saying, because if we redo lights or whatever, we don't have to have as many light poles, well then.
And you won't have as many place staying them.
Right, and then we can always get something else to hang.
Uh, sure.
We're great probably to cut down on light.
Because, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good thing to do.
And the, and the other thing is, yeah, we could, we could take some of that savings from the flowers to put towards like.
Towards the light poles.
Order banners, just.
Or banners if you said.
I mean, we have those, we have those metal ones, I guess we already have those metal ones, but like those, but I'm just saying, if you want something up year round, just get nice, plenty of banner ones and we can hang those up.
Well, we did that for the, the one twenty-fives, we put some metal.
Yeah, right, they did a lot of those metal ones.
That's what I'm saying, that we have built.
Semen, yeah.
We have cloth banners at one time also.
Yeah.
Canals.
But it was just a, just a suggestion, I guess, we don't.
Save money, yeah, save some money, like you said.
What's the, what's the deal on these trees, that these people want those out then on the other side?
The ones we currently, recently took down were.
Oh, they were dead? I thought maybe they're pushing cement again.
Well, they're all doing that.
Can't we just?
Well, did the city pay for all that way back then or did businesses pay?
Somebody donated money or.
I remember when it started.
I can't remember his name, it lives south of.
Prue Brown.
Yeah, Prue Brown.
Prue Brown was big on it, yeah.
The trees were supposed to be like eight foot trees and.
And they are pretty when they're lit.
They are, they're a mess.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a mess, but it, it doesn't last real long, no.
Well, you know, we've, we've talked about that, like memorials at church also, if it's something that is, um, that runs its course and is used up, there's nothing wrong with, nothing wrong with.
Changing.
Changing and starting over.
I agree.
I'm not saying we can't put some.
And maybe somebody else will have a thought.
Take them down.
Yeah, I didn't know if the businesses helped pay for some of those in front of them or not. If you take the trees down, you have to fill in that hole. Maybe somebody would like to donate a tree or some, a small tree.
Well, some, some businesses might not want.
With the trunk there, right?
Right, that's how, well, the old trunk, they destroy concrete.
We do, we, when we take them down, we usually leave about three or four foot and we can usually wiggle it enough. We do, we, when we take them down, we usually leave about three or four foot, and we can usually wiggle it enough to get.
Get it out?
An entirety of stuff out, but, yeah.
I mean, can we get an, can we get an estimate to take them out? I mean, that one, would that be easier to like snowplow?
Probably, yeah, going around them.
Clean the walk and stuff too.
Right.
And, and these guys know how to get them out.
Right.
So, it wouldn't cost us anything to hire somebody.
No. And then we can, next year we can think of something to put back up.
Maybe we'll see something at another committee too.
To just take it down and.
And stick with your idea of the four pots for hanging, and then see if we have some other thoughts.
I guarantee you some people are gonna be happy if we take them all down, and you're gonna have some.
Well, that's, people, people need to learn of change, so.
Well. Yeah, there you go.
We can't, we can't please everybody, so.
Right, gotta please.
So.
Do, do I have to make a mo- can I, am, but can we?
Can't, if you want more discussion on it, we could have it put on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for October thirty, take those plants down, or take the trees down.
Oh, you want all the trees?
All the trees to come down.
And the, and the plants?
And the, and the four-way plants, yeah, we can vote on that.
The other eight pots, you mean, you wanna keep four?
Only keep four.
Can we not take them out till next spring more?
I would agree with that, well, or are they more dead now?
Well, I'm just saying, cause we're gonna have holes, but I really.
Amen, that's all, gotta be cemented up.
Bring it all back out again.
Yep, that might be a thought, wait and do it.
We got a lot, we got a lot of ash trees and.
Yeah, that need to be moved.
See, if you're already taking trees down, we might as well just take your trees down.
I drove around, there's a lot in people's yards, there's a lot of dead ash trees. I've got four.
You're better, you can learn how to carve.
I just find out most trees.
You know, chop these trees off and carve something, you know.
A little bit of green left on it, but the rest of the trees.
I mean, if you need some rock, I got rock.
All those big trees.
Well, it is rock.
No, during the summer it took a beat, that one I told you about, it was green, it was green, and right now it's all brown except for one part. The, the one part.
That was all I had.
So, on the, I have a question about the ash trees, um, we had talked about that one time. Do we have to go around and actually inform those people that they have to, if it's in their yard, that they have to take them down?
So you take them down?
Not, not, not in the, in the city property.
On city property.
In the yard, I mean, because I see some dead ones in people's yards, and they're, I mean, there's nothing left of them.
Well, we can do it, what?
Probably have to see what some other towns are doing. Cause I know when, up at Sioux, I realize Sioux Falls is a lot bigger, but in any of the city properties, they, um, the homeowners, they could have them vaccinated or sprayed.
You said he did that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, at their expense, but if they don't do it, the city came in and just took them down, ground them out, and then.
Did you use that stuff I told you?
I talked to the sheriff, I see it in the sheriff's paper.
There's this stuff that you can buy or you don't really count.
They have told people not to put trees on the city parking anymore, because of the problems of like ash or whatever. And it's a lot of work for the city guys.
What it is.
And then we have to, the city has to stand that, so they were gonna stop them to, if you moved into a home, you can put your trees wherever, but not on that city parking. And I wonder too if that would be a better.
I think we need to look at our whole city ordinance and maybe update it, because in our city ordinance right now, it has not been updated since two thousand sixteen, and it still says that we have our meetings at seven thirty P M.
Well, that's, yeah, we have to see, get all those since then put on there, cause I think twenty-one is listed, but just January, so those all have to be added to the.
Because I, yeah, cause I've been looking at the city ordinance, and that has not been updated since two thousand sixteen, so it still says that our meeting times are seven thirty, so we're probably gonna get that changed.
If that's the city clerk, I mean, I don't know who adds those to that, just the sheets, so then when they're codified or codified, or whatever they call that word, that's done every ten years, is what I've heard. No, Janice told me ten, and I talked to Carol, and she said the same thing.
Really?
They both agreed. She said, you, well, she said, depends how many you have. If you do a lot of ordinances, she said you might want to do it faster.
We've changed some of them.
Yeah, and I know they're not added.
That brings up a comment that I wanted to make, that, um, I was gonna suggest that the council and the, and then the city clerk, um, get familiar with the ordinances, um, especially with, uh, title one, um, the municipal government structure, chapters one and two. Get familiar with that, so we all know what our role is here. And then the other thing that I was gonna suggest is that, um, definitely get, for Scott anyway, definitely get familiar with the zoning ordinance, and there's a, I'm sure you've seen it, but there's this zoning ordinance book.
Yeah, it's laying back there.
Yeah, um, and if, if, I would, I would suggest or recommend that if anybody comes in to, um, do a building for it, then you go to the ordinance book and make sure everything's correct according to the ordinance.
Scott's been doing a good job at that, checking that out.
Do we, do we have to turn it over to him yet, or?
Well, that's the thing I was gonna ask, you know, we did it temporary, and maybe we should get that on the agenda.
On the agenda next time.
I think so too.
Get it turned back over to.
If you feel so, right, you'll be like, okay.
I don't think they want to throw it at him right away.
No, so let's get that duty turned over to Scott then.
Yeah, and when I come in to sign a permit or look at one, Scott's always, well, you know, this and this and this and that. He's really good at that. Well, that's good. So.
That's all I have.
All right, and I want to add to that discussion, or any other discussion, or those we are.
Scott, do you think you need like a trainer in here for any, for anything, or?
I mean, with the financials, I mean, there's a lot, a lot going on there, I know I've talked to Carol a little bit with Jean about it, and, um, I mean, just, we need to get caught up, you know, with, you know.
All your reports and stuff like that coming up.
Right, right, yep, and what's needed, and we did talk with Carol from Pringard, and I know.
Well, Janice, was she here today?
No, no, never came, never made it today.
She didn't make it, okay.
Is there a way that we can, um, see how much it would be, so we're not like handwriting receipts? Can we download or get a print thing that prints out receipts?
Oh, I was thinking to do it on your computer.
We had to, if you want to do it through Summit, there is a receipts module, and you have to purchase it.
How many modules do we have?
Like, you have four or five of them? Okay.
I'm sure, I've never, I've actually never counted.
You have a payroll module?
Yep.
Is there any way that we can hook up a, instead of doing time cards by hand?
That you'd have to purchase.
Is that something we can maybe look into?
Yep, it's called front desk, and I do have papers on that already.
Okay. Well, you were at an auction one day, you wondered if they could.
I don't know, with that, I mean, I think that would be a little more.
Just a small, small computer.
Be fresh in to get.
We'll, we'll.
Out there, yeah, if they could do something, just they have a tablet.
I don't know, I mean, we need, we're in the twenty-first century here. We can't write out, we can't have a stick in their name, it's not very meaningful.
So we have, you have information on that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then find out at your expense, I know.
I guess can you get information on the?
Receipts?
Receipt one?
I think that's something to check into. Yeah. Cause it would look nice, so then write them.
I, no, I think we need to get in the twenty-first century.
Why don't Ryan said something about receipts?
Like sometimes, like, if you write on one and you go back, I don't know, three months later, you can't read it, and it's like, probably, I don't know, fade it out.
Check into it. Like receipts for townships when they pay for their fire protection, we can handle it in receipts.
So I think.
Do those receipts get scanned into? Laser fish?
Yep, I do have them in laser fish, but they're not searchable because they're handwritten, if it's tight, it's a lot easier. Handwritten, it doesn't always read it.
So, that's what I'm saying, we need to have that.
Yeah, but.
Well, check into your receipts there too, yeah, maybe throw that on the agenda too for us to look at.
Oh, so what's going on with the direct deposit, did we find out anything?
I thought you were working for October, aren't we? Or is that changed?
Actually, next week.
Oh, really?
I'm running stuff over to the bank in Sutherland tomorrow, they're gonna look at it. I know a few weeks ago, um, Whitney ran hers through, it's probably been more than a few now, but ran one of her checks through, and then I talked to, by today, and they say that actually went pretty good.
Okay, so that way they can try it.
So tomorrow morning, I'm gonna run, everybody that's signed up for now.
Sounds good.
Just guessing, I'd have to count the sheets for sure, I'm guessing about fifteen, I think we got about fifteen sheets there, so.
And then we should make some kind of a rule on that to any U book persons, if they start, they go that way, but the other ones here can be grandfathered in, or however you want to do it. I've just heard other places do it that way, not making people do it.
Everybody did not sign up.
Okay.
It was on the agenda.
It was on the, yeah, and then we never talked about it, so we gave it that table, so we.
Well, I think because they weren't ready for something.
So then we can't, you know, we got a person, can't really do that, it's how we approve it.
Right, yeah, but we can still, he can run what he's got, and then see how it rolls, and on your next, on the next coming.
About approval?
Well, we're, we've already approved to do the thing, hadn't we?
No.
Oh, I thought.
We tabled it.
We tabled it.
Oh, I thought we had actually approved the actual thing, just that we didn't know what, when and where.
Because we talked about it, and we all had, kind of had some questions, so then like, we're gonna table it, and then we never got back, and never got back from the agenda.
Okay. So then what does that do, then he can't run it?
Probably, so not, probably gets approved, I'm sure.
Someday we'll do it.
And we'll just have to, you know, have all the details or whatever, get it on the agenda.
No, I was saying, we need to prove that, or that we were actually not doing it.
We tabled it.
Okay. Got a new agenda, ready to go?